City of Apache Junction Council Meeting to Order. The pledge will be led by Robert Schroeder and invocation by Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do the city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you in the decisions we make that will affect others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask to be humble in our disagreements and that we never forget, we are here to serve the people of this beautiful community. Father, we ask for your protection for all of our first responders, those serving in our military, and all of their family members. We ask that they be brought home safely, each and every day. We also send our thoughts and our prayers to the family of the DEA agent in Tucson who lost his life in the line of duty. Father, bring his family peace and comfort. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Biggs?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Here.
Councilmember Nesser?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
Thank you. Consent agenda has a reminder under the, all the items in the consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request will be made prior to approving the consent agenda and will be moved to the new business. Do I have a motion for consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the consent agenda with the amendments to include the minutes on items number 12 and 14 to reflect the motions that were made by City Council.
Just a second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
No, and I would like to explain why. On the consent agenda item number three, this has to do with the residential townhouse subdivision named Ironwood Station. It's at the southeast corner of Ironwood Drive in West Superstition Boulevard. I had voted on this, no on this previously, and I know that there's a new plat, but it's very similar. But I am concerned about the amount of traffic that's going to be in that area, and I had really wanted to see a deceleration lane put in, and as I understand it, that has not been added, so I'm voting no.
Thank you. Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passed, Your Honor?
Okay, awards and presentation. Whoops, I lost the award here. Okay, I have one here. Make a Difference Day for October 9th. Whereas serious social problems concerning our nation, our city, and our future, and whereas we, the American people and citizens of Apache Junction, have a traditional of patho, patho, what's that word? Pathogee? I'm sorry. Voritism and a bridge to differences that separate people and help solve community problems, and whereas in our city, nonprofit organizations, schools, corporations, houses of worship, families, neighborhoods, friends serve together to make a difference, and whereas 2021 marks the 31st annual Make a Difference Day, held in partnership with Arizona Sustainability Alliance, and whereas the City of Apache Junction supports a vibrant community to enrich the lives of our citizen. Now, therefore, I, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim October 9th as Make a Difference Day in Apache Junction and urge all citizens to participate in volunteer projects as we work together to meet the needs of our neighbors in our city. And Dave Walden will be receiving this.
[laughing].
Don't make your wheeze.
Next up, Larry?
Oh, that was mean.
Thank you. And oh, thank you for the shirts, too. Okay, regional intergovernmental updates. Regional governmental meetings and updates from the council.
None at this time, Your Honor.
No.
Do you have a?
Well, we have Make a Difference Day on Saturday. We will be meeting at the focal point at 8:00. We should be done by noon. The projects that were laid out earlier, Silly Mountain, the replanting of plants over at Flatiron Park, we have a private, well, it's kind of a private alley cleanup to do. It's really a fabulous way to help all of our neighborhoods and our city look better, and we can't ever do that often enough, but this is a national Make a Difference Day and more a part of it, so please come out.
Tess? Okay, one of the things I wanted to say is I attended this Saturday, a walk for ending Alzheimer's, and it was, I'll say, a unique opportunity. We had a bunch of Mustangs running around, both four-legged as well as the four-wheeled ones, and it was an interesting morning, a beautiful morning, so it was very enjoyable. And I will make a comment a little bit later again, so. Managers report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, City Manager. Very happy to report tonight that on September 22nd, the Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chief Kelly were able to participate in our very own city, in the 6th Annual Law Enforcement Breakfast, hosted by the Alliance of Christian Leaders of the East Valley. And at that event, Chief Kelly and the Apache Junction Police Department was recognized as leaders in the East Valley, and so I'll pass along the hardware here, so that you could take a look at it, and we just want to congratulate our Apache Junction Police Department and their great work here in the East Valley. Today, Mayor, you and I were able to attend a very special kickoff event for domestic violence here in Pinal County. Our Pinal County Attorney, Kent Volkmer, received all the law enforcement agencies, all the folks that work in the prosecution of domestic violence awareness to Florence today, and Chief Kelly and Corporal Harshman and myself had a chance to get that kicked off and to be a part of that group that is doing all it can to help bring awareness to such a wave of horrible stuff that we all go through, and so wanted to make sure that everybody knows that the city passed a resolution at our last council meeting, and when you see the Dutchman lit up in purple, and our city's in purple, it's in recognition of that awareness. And then for my last item tonight, I'm wanting to recognize, and I hope I got everyone, but there are many individuals who have been a part of many of the discussions that laid the groundwork for the, many of the agenda items tonight. So, in our audience tonight, we have some special visitors who are former city council members, former mayors, and former county supervisors, and so I'll just go down, and if you're here, please stand, we'll recognize you and give you a clap at the end. Robin Barker. Jeff Struble. In the back there, he didn't want to stand up. Dave Waldron. Sandy Smith. Todd House. Doug Coleman. And I think that's everyone. We have a couple more that still may come later, our former Mayor, Jeff Sertie. But if you would all please join him in giving these folks a great hand. Appreciate their dedicated service. And to talk. When you contemplate the discussion of planning for the 30 years of Apache Junction, it takes a long time to plan for that, and it happened over many city councils that helped lead that vision. We have here with us also our coordinating partners, like Chief Whitney from the Superstition Fire Medical, and also Rock Garnett, who was a part of the East Valley Partnership, who way back started this idea of superstition vistas, and so we thank you all for being a part of our community and a part of this vision.
Lisa Atkins.
And I'm sorry, Lisa Atkins is here, State Land Commissioner. I'm so happy she's here to make it and can witness this as well. Thank you, Mayor, for that, and thank you. That concludes my report tonight.
Okay. Announcement for the current events from Al, but first, before we get started, I have a special announcement to make, that we did a, an opportunity for a group getting together to get funds available for people that are suffering with cancer, and they had a fashion show, and one of our individuals up here decided to be part of one of the activities up there, and here he is in all his glory. See, this is what he dressed up as being himself.
Just for fun.
And of course, then the other one is for night out and a man of presenting opportunities, and we'll let you decide which ones of those are. Al?
Al, if I could add real quick to that, as the Mayor said, it was the Courage Under Cancer Foundation, which seeks to raise money for local community members who are fighting cancer, going through one of the toughest times. None of the money goes to research, but it all does go to help them pay their bills and make sure that they keep up on everything, so they don't have everything come collapsing under them. Leading up to the event, it's taken us quite a long time, but the night of the event, we crossed over their threshold, they wanted to raise $30,000, and they had raised $35,000 by the end of the night, so none of that is possible without the amazing generosity of the Apache Junction and Gold Canyon community, so thank you all for that.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Al Bravo, Public Information Officer for the City of Apache Junction. Couple of quick announcements, since we have, of course, a very busy agenda tonight. Kids Idol returns. The auditions are coming up here later this month and into November. There is information available there on the screen, you can watch for that. Obviously, you can also go to ajkidsidol@gmail.com for any questions. We also are bringing back the art displays at City Hall and at the library. We've been a couple of years behind in bringing that back, so that is now going to begin in November and go through the winter, so if you have questions about that, you'd like to have one of your pieces of art considered to be displayed at the City Hall or at the library, please contact the City Manager's Office at 474-5066. All the information's always on the homepage, as always, and don't forget, we're getting closer and closer to 2022, when we celebrate the centennial of our community, and meetings continue on the 2nd and 4th Wednesdays of every month at the Apache Junction Library. They're still looking for a lot of, a lot of help leading up to the big event on January the 8th, 2022, and those are your announcements for tonight.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'm going to combine the public hearings for items number 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, which consists of ordinances 1515, 1516, 1513, 1514, 1511, and resolutions 21-47, 21-48, and 21-39, as each pertain to the annexation and the proposed master plan community zoning for the auction and retained properties. And I'm going to have Jennifer kind of read them all out for me.
Certainly, Your Mayor. Item number 8, ordinance 1515, case AN-1-20, on the proposed annexation of 6,600 acres of vacant state trust land. Item number 9, ordinance 1516, accompanying case AN-1-20, assigning and establishing city equivalency zoning to state trust land property being annexed. Item number 10, ordinance 1513, auction property at Superstition Vista's, a request by D.R. Horton, Inc. to rezone approximately 2,783 acres from general rural low-density, single-family detached residential to master planned community, adopting by reference the master planned community zoning document. Item number 11, resolution 21-47, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled Auction Property at Superstition Vista's Master Planned Community Plan, August 30th, 2021. Item number 12, ordinance 1514, retained property at Superstition Vista's, a request by the Arizona State Land Department to rezone approximately 5,307 acres from general rural low-density, single-family detached residential to master planned community, adopting by reference the master planned community document. Item number 13, resolution 21-48, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled Retained Property at Superstition Vista's Master Planned Community Plan, August 30th, 2021. Item number 14, ordinance 1511, Amending City Code, Volume 2, Land Development Code, by amending Chapter 10, Engineering Standards, and adopting by reference and amended Chapter 10, as more fully detailed in that certain document entitled 2021 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume 2, Chapter 10, Engineering Standards. And item 15, resolution number 21-39, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled 2021 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume 2, Land Development Code, Chapter 10, Engineering Standards.
Catch your breath. Sidney?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can I just take a quick minute to do a couple thank yous? So I want to thank the teams internally that have been such a key piece of this, including Sidney as the project manager, Larry Kirch, Rudy Iskevius have been the key staff members on, like I said before, I really do think Rudy's middle name is Rudy Annexation Iskevius. He is Mr. Annexation for this city for decades, and that team has been vitally important to the success of the preparation of the rezoning and the annexation piece. Have an infrastructure team, Darren from the sewer district, Mike Loggins from our water district, Mike Weaver from Public Works, Joel Stern, our city attorney, and Matt Busby and Emil have been so key, as we did some initial planning for infrastructure. There is none there we're planning for and getting it ready, and so some key components that were done many years ago as far as our plan on how this would work, really prepared us for this time. Our CFD team, the community facility districts, the ability to finance that infrastructure, Zach, Joel, Matt, Leslie from Finance, and of course Darren and Mike from the water district and the sewer district, and then all of our departments that were involved on the development agreements, Pam Harrison from Library, Liz Langenbach from Parks and Rec, Chief Tom Kelly from PD, and Mike Weaver from Public Works, and of course Larry, Rudy, and Sidney were all part of that team. I also have to say a huge thanks to Mark Edelman from the State Land Department. We have an army, and the State Land has Mark. And Mark, thank you so much for being there along the way, and Lisa for allowing him to be such a big part of all the process. And then to the folks over at D.R. Horton and their group and their expertise and guidance along the way to help us conceptualize the ability for us to put this big piece all together, to them we give great thanks. And Sidney, I'll turn it over to you now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Sidney Arias, one of the planners on staff. As Jennifer noted and the Mayor noted, there are quite a number of items on your agenda tonight. I'm going to be dividing my presentation into three parts, into three public hearings. The first public hearing will cover the annexation, the auction MPC, the retained MPC, and the engineering standard modifications. Bit of background of how we got here today. On November 4th, the Arizona State Land Department conducted an auction of approximately 2,000 acres, 2,800 acres known as the auction property. D.R. Horton was deemed a successful bidder, and they were tasked to master plan and rezone a larger site of 8,100 acres known as the site. The site is made up of two parcels, of course, the original 2,800 acres that were auctioned, but then the remaining acreage as well, and that remaining acreage is known as the retained property. At a later date, D.R. Horton partnered with Brookfield Residential for the development of half of the auction parcel. The submittal and the review of the MPC plans started in April of this past year. At the time of the auction, portions of the auction property and the retained property were located in unincorporated Pinal County, approximately 6,600 acres. Because of this process, D.R. Horton has requested to annex that 6,600 acres. The annexation process started on December 22nd of last year. As you remember, as you may remember, City Council had a public hearing regarding the annexation in January. The annexation petition circled for about nine months from January to September 30th. This exhibit here notes the parameters of the site. The parameters of the site for the all 8,100 acres are from baseline to the SR24 and from Meridian to the Cap Canal. You could also note the parameters of the auction parcel, which are from Elliott to Ray and Meridian to Idaho, noted in that gray hash mark. As I previously mentioned, D.R. Horton has partnered with Brookfield, and they're going to be responsible for the east half of the auction parcel. One other thing to note, through the annexation, our current city limits stop at Elliott, but through the annexation, they will stop at the SR24 alignment. You could think of these two MPCs as two new zoning ordinances, which cover a lot of, a range of topics. Examples of those are land use budgets, permitted uses, street standards, and the landscape and wall standards. So what exactly do these MPCs facilitate? They facilitate quite a, quite a bit of development. An example of that for the auction property is two development units, approximately 11,000 new homes, and for non-residential development, approximately 443,000 square feet. For the retained property, it's six development units, for a maximum of 16,000 new residential homes, and about 9.5 million square feet of non-residential development. Because of the MPCs, the development team has asked us to slightly modify Chapter 10 of our engineering standards. An example of those modifications is to allow underground storage in residential development, which we previously did not allow. In terms of public outreach, approximately 950 public notification letters were sent out. The development team also held three public meetings, one on June 14th, second one on June 23rd, and a third one on August 4th. A virtual meeting was also held on June 16th. Altogether, approximately 60 people attended those meetings. Very common questions that came up about those meetings consisted of infrastructure improvements, the timing of the SR24, and what were the expected home prices once that development gets going. Staff only received one phone call from a resident in the City of Mesa expressing support for the development. At the Planning Commission public hearing, we had four residents at the City of Mesa, and they had very similar questions to those that attended the public, open house meetings in person. Few, a few key dates to note, the Planning Commission reviewed the MPC plans through two work sessions and formally recommended approval on 9/14. Of course, City Council also had two work sessions, one on 9/20, and one last night where they heard from the development team. With that said, staff is recommending approval of the annexation, the auction MPC, the retained MPC, and slight modifications to our engineering standards through the ordinances and resolutions listed on your screen. That concludes staff's presentation regarding the first four items, items 8 through 15. I'm here if you have any questions, and so is the development team.
Anyone have any questions?
No, sir.
So, does the applicants want to speak on this item?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Patrick Brown. I'm the Vice Presidentland for D.R. Horton, Inc. My address for the record is 20410 North 19th Avenue. First, I want to thank the council's time last night, as we had a very productive work session. I also want to recognize the various Planning Commissioners that are located here tonight and their unanimous approval back in September. We appreciate their support, as well as your guys' ongoing time and effort and comments on our application. As I mentioned, we had a very productive work session, and I won't go into the detail that we went into, but I do think it was important that we were able to talk through the approach the State Land Department took to sell the property, who D.R. Horton and Brookfield are. The amazing outreach and extensive outreach that we've done in meeting with the various entity holders and just business interests in this market as well. As I mentioned yesterday, I think we've created an unbeatable team, and it starts with the State Land Department, Brookfield Residential, our consultants, and the City of Apache Junction and their various districts within the city. I'd like to start by saying, taking a page out of Bryant's, and there's so many people to thank, but I appreciate the time to do that tonight, because they're, everyone has put in a lot of time and effort. So as for the state, I really want to thank Jim Perry, Paul Peterson, Mark Edelman, and Ruben Ortega. They have a number of consultants here, Miller, Andrew Miller, Michael Kofiso, and last but not, definitely not least, Commissioner Lisa Atkins, whose bravery allowed us to continue to move forward with an unprecedented and a unique auction that leads us here today. Second, the great team at Brookfield, John Bradley, Dee McDonald, Carl Plaron, Bob Camerley, Gary Lynn, and Eric Toon, who's the real man of the action. He's the one that's running the project for, for Brookfield and doing a fantastic job. But between Brookfield and D.R. Horton, we have an army of consultants. I think Bryant's said that a few times, truly it is an army, and many of them are here. I really want to thank Karen Taylor Robson, Andy Barron, Chris Zabo, Dana Belknap, Jeff Denzack, Jody Pacorsky, Jay Kramer, Nick Dodd, Dan Matthews, Mike Johnson, Wynne Lamb, Josh Robinson, Aubrey Thomas, Tim Pollan, Jennifer Bigsby, and Andrew Schmigelski, plus hundreds others. They really allow us to help create dreams, and many of them make sure that those dreams can actually get built and become a reality, and that makes my job so much fun. Finally, I really can't say enough about the amazing staff that the City of Apache Junction and their districts have shown us. It truly has been a breath of fresh air, it's become my favorite project to work on. A lot of it starts with the leadership of Bryant Powell. Many of you don't know, we met prior to the October submittal of our qualifications for the auction, and I can tell you, right from that initial meeting, you could tell from the staff that there was a vision, there was a hunger and a passion about what's superstition vistas, and it was infectious, and it started with Bryant, and it led to Matt Busby, Joel Stern. I can't say enough about the Planning Department, as Bryant said, Larry Kirch, Sidney, this MPC document has your fingerprints all over this, just like it does ours, so appreciate your tireless amount of time. Rudy, Mike Loggins, Mike Weaver, Emil Schmidt, Liz Langenbach, Pamela Harris, Chief Kelly, Chief Whitney, Zach Sakis, Heather Wallace, and Darren Anglin. Really, it's been a monstrous effort to get here today with all the master plans, all the future infrastructure, and the future growth that's coming. I do need to thank our D.R. Horton family, Dan Bono, who's running the project for us for over a year, this is his baby, Lance Johnson, our in-house counsel, the, all the corporate support from our corporate officers, as well as our regional officers, Rick Horton, Chris Lindhorst, Jeff Mench, and Les Brandon, they have supported us from Texas like you guys don't even understand. This truly is a historic night. We are, or you are, laying this- We are, or you are, laying the foundation for the next great master plan community in the East Valley, and it's coming to the community of Apache Junction. We would request your approval on the various actions tonight, and thank you for all of your time. Happy to answer any questions as it arises. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Nope, thank you. Anyone else of the applicants would like to speak? State land? Nope, see a shaking no. Okay, as a public hearing, would anyone like to speak? I've got a couple here that I've got requested. Ron Arnett, would you like to speak?
Rock.
Rock? Oh, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. How delightful to be with you this evening. You probably don't really understand, this started about eighteen years ago, and it's been a delight to see it come forward, and I'm excited to see you folks move forward. I have to say that the name came from a visit that I had with Sandy Smith down south, and we were talking about a park, and as I drove back up Hunt Highway, I could see the superstition, and as I looked at the superstition, I started writing names down as I drove. Vision of superstition, superstition, and putting it in Spanish, and then it came to me, superstition vistas. And when I got home, I called Chuck Backus, who had been the president or the chair of East Valley Partnership, and I said, "How does it sound, East Valley Partnership supporting superstition vistas?" And he said, "Let's go with it," and so we did, only to be met by people like Sandy and George Hoffman, who said, "Arnett, I don't like you. I don't know what you're doing, but I don't like you." And it took us a while to get acquainted, and because they thought we were going to try to move the county line east. Well, it looks to me like tonight you're moving the county line west, perhaps. But as you start this, it was a, you're just now getting started on a fifty- or sixty-year vision that we had of superstition vistas. And what you're going to do tonight, I think, is the start of an amazing development that's going to go across your south border and eventually do wonders where you've got forty, fifty thousand people here, now you're going to have a hundred and fifty in this great community, and I congratulate you. I have to mention Mark Winkelman of the state land department way back when, who saw the vision with Grady Gammidge, and of course Sandy, and we had many meetings with Sandy Smith, Chuck Backus, and Mike Hutchinson. I have to give a shout out to, also, to Dick Silverman of SRP. When we first went to Dick Silverman and asked for money, he said, "I'll give you money, but I want you to come back and tell me that we have got every community that's going to be touched by this property engaged and involved." And Apache Junction participated, Mesa participated, the counties, both counties, and many others as we moved forward to raise the money to get the master plan. And once we got the master plan put together, it was adopted by Pinal County as part of their comprehensive general plan. So you're just getting started with the grand plan that's been in place. It includes transportation routes, water, open spaces, employment areas, and I believe that your team that's coming forward to ask for this change will embrace all of those items. So I'm here to congratulate you and wish you well as you move forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. William Caffrey?
Mayor and Council, I'm new to the area, but I do think that there are some questions that I haven't heard. Granted, I haven't heard all the debate that's taken place up to this point, but some things that I would like to have considered.
Can you give us your address, please?
Yes, twenty-three thirty South Goldilocks Court.
Thank you.
I'd like to have a few points considered before any final decisions are made, as a resident of the area. Maybe the only one in this room that has these things on mind. But when any decision is made for a community, I think it's important that we consider how it affects everybody involved. Hopefully, that's a sentiment that's shared, that is shared amongst everyone here. Considering the people that are involved, the first person or the first group that is involved, of course, is the developer. And I think it would be fair to say that as long as the economy continues to move in the direction that it is, or stays stable and doesn't have a downturn, that the developer's going to do well. This is going to be a good thing for them financially. I think it's also to be expected that the city will benefit in terms of tax revenue from all of the new residents and businesses that will be brought in. I think that's also quite clear. And as far as the people that come into this area, of course, they get new homes, and they get new businesses. That all would seem to be good. The only people that I don't know is being considered in this are the residents that live here already. And I wonder, as, because we see the same trend happening all over the country, at what point do we stop to consider the long-term effects of bringing people into an area and increasing the population density? I think the reason that Apache Junction has a lurch for people, and why I personally am here, is because of the fact that there, at least in many sections, like where I live, the population density is limited to a point that the residents can have peace and quiet. They can have a pace of life that is not so hectic as the urbanized areas. And I think that's one of the reasons that people move here to Arizona and to places like this, is that they can have a higher quality of life. My question is, when we bring in this many homes, these many businesses, what does that do for the quality of the life of the people that are already here? And at what point do we say, in order to preserve that quality of life, what point do we say, "Hey, we need to limit what we have so that everything stays good for those who are here in terms of, not just the quality of life, but even the values of our homes"? What I know for a fact, having been through this in other areas that I've lived, is what we're going to see here is we're going to see road constructions, roads torn up, traffic increases, all kinds of other construction issues that will be created. But even once this is done, what else are we going to have? We're going to have increased traffic, with increased population density typically comes increased crime, all the things that people move, are moving here to get away from, in essence, they're bringing themselves. Houses without any real yards, you know, for the kids to run around, all these sorts of things. And so my question is, recognizing that we, and you as well, are affected by these things, at what point is there a limit imposed? Not to mention the questions of infrastructure, being able to support this development. At what point does the city council decide enough is enough? I'd really like to know that, so thank you very much.
Mr. Schroeder? George Schroeder, two four four four, West Virginia Street, pardon my throat. There's a lot of good things with this. I'd say ninety-eight percent of it is what we need, what we want, what we need to move forward with. Just, I want to say one thing, and we'll let it at that. I haven't heard anything about the proximity laws, and they're there. I'll find them if I need to. If you can't, I know where to find them. We need proximity laws between religious entities and schools. I haven't heard one thing about it. It's got to be there. We don't need, you know, interaction between the two. They could do it on their own. Thank you very much. Now, I'm glad to see Betty Smith here. She's long been a part of SALT, and I was right there with them for five, six years out in Gold Canyon. I liked what we did. I liked the discussions. We were able to stop a lot of the growth out there. Lisa Atkins, glad to see you came. It's very important. So a lot of the money, you say, comes for the kids. Well, seven billion in the coffers. I don't see anything going to the kids. There is a solution I'd like to offer. We can come up, and I know the Land Trust Act. I've read it all the way back to nineteen-ten, okay? It was set up for a select members of society, and it's got to stop. But that's another day. That's another issue. What we can do is come up with an index of how that money can be mandated, because we have such an education problem. And it didn't just start yesterday. This is sixty, seventy years of kids that, nothing. Nothing compared to where I grew up. I don't even feel myself educated. I just was opportune. I went, I learned, because I wanted to learn. I was a sponge. School was fun for me. We need to make school fun. But we can't do that if we don't get the money that we're supposed to get through a federal act. We're not getting it. We're not getting that money. They can say that we are all they want, but we're not. The proof is in the pudding. Schools are going under. They don't know what to do. They're taxed to the max.
That's not, that's not...
Oh, no, this is an index for the annexation, that these schools need to be paid for. The kids need to be taken care of. So it is within that basis.
It's just that it's ongoing.
Now, we have gone at this for a long time, like the first gentleman said, he says eighteen years. It's actually longer than that. They've actually tried to come up with a number of three hundred thousand homes. And this is thirty years old. We've been trying to do this. And it's a pie in the sky, because like the second gentleman said, wind is too much. D.R. Horton doesn't know too much. They just want to build. I can't discredit, I can't discredit them for that, but we can. Limit and, you know, put limits on what can and cannot be done. Now, credits, all the credits due to the staff and everything that's been having to do with this. You know what I've seen over the last couple of years? One gentleman, one gentleman, I call on Friday night at seven o'clock, he's there. I come on Saturday morning just to leave a message. At seven o'clock, he's there. He doesn't get vacations. He don't take time. He does all the legal stuff, which, I mean, you guys maybe take for granted. No, no, no. Mr. Sterns is that person. You really need to give a lot of credit to him, because all these other staff members depend on him to guide them in the right direction and pass what they can pass. This is the guy, right here. You need to really thank him a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is, before I close the public hearings, anyone else would like to speak in this? Yes, come on forward. Name and address, too.
Yes, my name is Pam North. I live at eighty-seven fourteen East Hall Drive in Mountain Brook Village, just next to Gold Canyon. And I'm an ex-Californian. I've been here since the early nineties. And I came out when my folks retired. They wanted to get out of California because of the growth. And I hate seeing it happen here. A few years ago, after more than ten years of being, having been back to California, seeing what had happened to it, I could not wait to leave. So I have enjoyed, well, I just recently moved to Mountain Brook myself to help my folks. I've lived in northeast Mesa for nineteen years, and I have seen the blith from Mesa moving farther east as growth happened. And I have enjoyed the peace, tranquility, which is what my folks loved about Mountain Brook Village, and I hate to see that destroyed. What I'm concerned about is the infrastructure. The traffic on the sixty has gotten worse year after year. And I see no signs of anything to help alleviate that. We're going to have, you know, a hundred thousand more cars on the road turning off just before we get to the, where the freeway sixty turns into the two-lane on into Gold Canyon. It's been a nightmare. I can remember when we first moved out here, there was not even a traffic signal at Mountain Brook Drive. Now, you can't even get out without having to wait for a green light, let alone get in. I just hate seeing what we enjoyed living out here destroyed by dense population, and the crime, and the noise, and the drugs that it will bring. So I am not thrilled. I mean, I understand growth, but this is on a scale that I think will ruin this whole side of the valley. So that's my issue, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Steve Byfield, five sixty-one East Saddlebutte Street, Apache Junction. I'm representing the Chamber of Commerce. I'm the chairman of the board for the Apache Junction Chamber and the business community. And I've got a few things, I guess, you know, people have made comments, and, you know, they talk about growth. But doing it this way, we have control of this growth. I mean, you can let San Tan Valley come, you can let Queen Creek come north, and you have no control over it. At least, we can mold it, and you've got great developer, D.R. Horton, Brookdale, doing the job that is going to, it's going to take a lot of work, you know, it's going to take many years. But we've got it. We've got a great police department. We've got great facilities. We've got awesome building, zoning, Larry and Rudy and Dave, they do a great job. We've got everything in place. We are at a hundred years this year, and this is a gift, for a hundred years, to have this at our feet. And I truly think that it's a blessing, and that business community will definitely grow. We have very, you know, businesses that go down during the summer, and I think this is going to help. I think this will help level that out and bring people and level out our businesses. It needs to grow, and even a mom-and-pop business will be advantaged at this annex issue. So I would say, wholeheartedly, the Chamber and our business community support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Todd House, five oh two seventy East Tadago Street. This is a day I didn't think was ever going to come, D.J. I mean, we have fireworks tonight, really. This is a big night for the city of Apache Junction. I've heard this, Rock Arnett, the foundation of this for over twenty years. This has been in the works and in the coming, and I think that I just kind of held a baton for a few years after Sandy laid the groundwork for this, and I think this is an outstanding start of what's going to enrich the people that live in Apache Junction with a lot more diversity than we have currently. And it'll leave more opportunities for people to start small businesses, and it will leave one of the greatest people that I can think of. D.R. Horton is going to be doing a master plan, which is going to be just wonderful for the area, and I have complete trust in their ability to do a wonderful master plan for you. And I know that it's been a lot of work for the city. I know that every part of the staff has worked all night and all day to try and get this done. So this is just the culmination of a long time coming, and I just here, out of retirement, just to say, congratulations. This is your night to celebrate and go forward with this annexation. Thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I just have to say congratulations.
I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I just have to say congratulations. I know that a lot of us came out here. I came out here in nineteen seventy, and it wasn't even incorporated when I first came out, and had a little RV park. And I've seen the planning as we have gone from times that have grown, and the planning that has gone into this from, not only the superstition vistas, which you were a part of, but taken into that was water, taken into that is the transportation route, the work on the north-south, the work on the twenty-four, so that it will alleviate a lot of the congestion. And as the developers go forward, they will be paying for quite a bit of this infrastructure, along with possibly the infrastructure tax that was put in if it ever gets completely taken care of in the courts. And so I think it's been a long time coming. I know when we first started the superstition vistas and the planning, and I would like to correct Rock about one thing. I never said I didn't care for him. I just said I didn't want him to move the county line. The county line had to stay where it is. So it is going to be developed. I think that the planning that is going into it has been, is vital, and has been done. And so thank you very much for doing all that you have done. And again, for state land, it is their land, and they have been part of this from the very beginning. And Lisa has taken it to the very next step. So thank you very much for, oh, I don't know if I give you my address. Forty-four fifteen South Primrose Drive, and that's not Primrose Lane. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Jeff Cerdy, two five six one North Prospectors, and I have an office right across the street. And I want to thank and congratulate all of staff and all the tremendous work that's gone into this, and Lisa Atkins with State Land. And everything has just fallen into place with water and power and all the infrastructure. And with the fees that are set up, everything should pay for itself. All the other areas have had this kind of good growth. There can be bad growth. We don't want it uncontrolled like the San Tan Valley, but this way, starting with a base and the master plan that you guys have, it's going to be really, really good. And we get the reputation of being a retirement community. There will be children here, which is going to build, breathe new life into the community, and the schools will thrive and prosper, too. So I just wanted to give my appreciation. And of course, I jumped in late. I didn't have as much as some of the pioneers in the back have, but you guys have all done a wonderful job, and we all look forward to it. And it's so far south that it's not going to hurt our lifestyles that we live up here. Our call to Saks will stay the same, and this will help to get twenty-four pushed out. I do want to put on your radar to start to develop Ray, Ray Road, and get it punched as far east as possible. The county's ready to help with that, and hopefully, A.D.A.T. will also. So once again, thanks and congratulations.
Next. I'm Doug Coleman, fourteen seventy-four South Royal Palm. I just want to say thank you to everybody. I just, I'm going to get emotional. I've waited for this day for, I don't know how, well, twenty-plus years. We moved out here in nineteen eighty, and I was born and raised in Mesa, right next door. But I remember when we came out here, nineteen eighty, the census showed us at nine thousand residents. I think what is now known as Gold Canyon, which was King's Ranch, had a population of about a hundred. And just watching the growth, when I was first elected to the city council in ninety-one, we just adopted a general plan, and it called for us to keep the north part and in between the Y, which used to exist, low density and horse property, and to protect that. But it always has been a plan for south of the freeway, which opened in ninety-one, to have a little higher density, to bring people in, to support the community, and to add to, not to detract from. Taught at the high school here for thirty-one years, watched it go up and down, and up and down. And I can't tell you how excited I am about this whole project. I appreciate anybody that's had a little bit to do with it. I do remember, and maybe this is what Sandy's talking about, there was talk about a Red Mountain County that was going to take in the east valley, and it was because they were starting to spend all kinds of money over on the west side, over in Glendale, you know, and pushing those through. And I'm glad we stayed in Pinell County, and that that didn't happen. But it's been a struggle. I remember there was a supervisor in Maricopa County that kind of lobbed a bomb and said that if Mesa had any vision, they would annex everything south and go right up to the Superstition Mountains and hem us in. And I got a phone call at school asking me if I had seen their proposed plan. And I said, "No, I haven't." And they said, "Can we email it to you real quick, because we'd like to get a comment from you?" And so they emailed it to me, I was there at school. And on my lunch break, I took a look at it and called the guy back, and he says, "Oh, what do you think?" And I said, "I think it's immoral." Of course, that was the byline, you know, it's immoral, Mayor Doug Coleman. And it was a struggle, there was political cartoons of Mayor Hocker and I with boxing gloves on, you know, who's going to control all of this? And I'm just, I'm grateful to have the invitation to come here tonight to see this all come to approval from the community. And I want you to know that I support you in your decision to approve this. I want to thank Lisa Atkins, especially in the State Land Department, for trusting us, really, to do what's best for our community and for the area out here in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I close again, I'll ask for the public hearing, would anyone else would like to speak on any of these items that are listed before the public hearing this time? Seeing comments from the council.
Yeah, I guess a lot was mentioned, and first of all, I just want to thank everybody who's helped us get to this opportunity. I'm in a unique position, I'm really proud of, tonight, and the work that's happened growing up in Apache Junction. I've heard about this. I sat in Doug Coleman's classroom in high school and talked this whole through. I've watched this happen over years, and the ebbs and flows of trying to get it here. So it's really, really exciting, and to be a part of it's a real honor. To the community members who have concerns over transportation or infrastructure or anything, we have a three-hundred-plus-page bible on every piece of this development down south. Countless eyes have gone into this, conversations, twenty years of conversations have gone into this. It's a really great plan, it's a solid plan. I think a couple people mentioned, you know, really protecting what we have in the northern part of Apache Junction and growing to the south. We can do both. We can have a vibrant community while still maintaining that small-town feel. And we're going to make it happen, and we all have to do it together. So anybody that wants to jump on board with that, we're ready for you.
D.R.
I'd like to also tag on to what Brayden has said, but I'd also like to thank our staff, because I cannot imagine, it would make my head explode if I had to come up with a document like they did. And even reading it, my head wanted to explode. Not my cup of tea to do those things, but I am so proud of all of you that put so much time, effort, and thought into this, because being in real estate for over thirty years, I have seen growth. When I was first working, Power Road was still a dirt road, and nobody wanted to cross, like Power Road was this no-man's-land east of there. And I just loved it out here. I thought, "Well, I belong out there. I don't know about these people in town, but that's what I'm going." But the amazing work that has gone into this, and it's really a forty-year project that has happened, and more annexations will come along, but this groundwork that has been laid, the thoughts and the meetings that the community has been available to see, I understand change is hard. But change is the one thing that we can always bet on is going to happen. And hopefully, with this document and the people that are in charge, it will happen in a way that it will be a big asset to the whole area.
Robert?
That's about it. Sorry.
Nothing to add to that.
Okay. Kelly?
I just want to say, it's such an honor and privilege to follow in the footsteps of some of these great people, and to be able to sit here today and vote on such an important thing that will affect our community forever. And so thank you to staff, and D.R. Horton, and Brookfield, and I'm just excited about the whole thing, and I'm anxious to see it start and progress, and it's going to be a great addition to Apache Junction. So thank you all.
I just want to share a little story with you, to tell you how proud I am of being a part of this. My parents retired and moved to Apache Junction back in nineteen seventy-three. When, I didn't live here then, so I don't know what years and what happened, but my dad got involved with the people who incorporated Apache Junction in nineteen seventy-eight, getting all the signatures for petitions to get it on the ballot and everything. And so my dad was quite involved with creating Apache Junction. And he ended up, he was the chairman of the very first Board of Adjustment for the city of Apache Junction. And here I am now, forty-three years later, with this happening. So I'm kind of proud of that, and proud of our city and everybody, all the employees and everybody who's making this happen, along with D.R. Horton and Brookfield and everybody else. So thank you.
Yeah, I just want to share the same sentiments that Kelly said. It is a privilege and an honor to be here after some of our, following the footsteps and the groundwork that some of our early pioneers had laid out, and to hear the stories, and as I see the faces shining, how rewarding and gratifying it must be to staff. We've got staff that have been here, you know, almost the whole time, and some staff have left, and new staff that's come on board. So it's really, it is a privilege and an honor to look out and to just, I got goosebumps, just being a part of what's to come, due to the visionaries that were there ahead of us. And I do share the same sentiments with growth. It's tough. When I first moved here, the whole reason we moved here is because we wanted our children to grow up in a rural community, and we watched horses being ridden right down Apache Trail. We don't want to lose our horse communities and our large properties. And I asked that question last night, if our developers are going to consider large properties. So I get it, I get it. And some of the comments that were made about growth, we have an opportunity. I think Mr. Byfield said it well, we can control it, or we can have a neighboring community control it. So it's really best for us to have that local control ourselves. And, no, it's definitely a privilege and an honor. We were there when they had the celebration, they opened up the sixty to Power Road. There was a huge celebration, a huge celebration when Supervisor Sandy Smith, they had it on the bridge over on Ironwood. You know, these are all things that, you know, we remember coming in, but certainly, we weren't here as long as you folks. So we just want to thank the folks that had the visionary and the early pioneers that really put this in place to begin with. And thank you for coming, and obviously, thank you for the developers and the staff that have put the work in. So, really cool, really neat to be a part of it.
Well, I'm going to make a couple of comments concerning the couple of the people that made comments as well. First off, the tax for the city of Apache Junction, the city does not have a tax on your residents, so there is no tax advantage at all for the city of Apache Junction. The individual in Mountain Brook Village, we're working on the roads, the interstructure down the south, that's going to be taking them directly over towards the one oh one, and that is going to definitely help on that traffic that you were very concerned about. So we have taken some of those things into consideration already, and we're looking into this. This is why, again, a planned community looks at the whole picture and comes up with alternatives that will help out that. And that is something that we are working very hard on. And this is a planned community, something that we look at for the entire area. And again, it was mentioned that, you know, we want to look at being able to control it ourselves, instead of having it at wild. You look down in the San Tan area, I mean, there's no, other than the county, and they just, basically, in the sense that people went and put up homes and everything in the area and started the development. And of course, they're suffering down there because of it, in Johnson Ranch, very much so. And so we're putting this in the aspects on it that we have control, and we understand what's going on and what the needs are for the developments, as well as what the needs are for the community. And I also want to say thank you to our staff and everything that they did on this together as well. Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion, number eight, ordinance number fifteen fifteen.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fifteen fifteen be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifteen sixteen, sorry, fifteen fifteen, an ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Apache Junction, Pinell County, Arizona, in case A N dash one dash twenty pursuant to provisions of Title Nine, Chapter Four, Article Seven, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto by annexing certain territory contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Apache Junction, recordation repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for penalties.
Main motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fifteen fifteen, as read by the city clerk, be approved and adopted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay, first one done. Do I have a motion for item number nine, ordinance number fifteen sixteen?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Excuse me, I just hit the wrong page.
Here, can you read it?
No, I just hit the wrong button.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance number fifteen sixteen be read by the title owner, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifteen sixteen, an ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, a of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction, Arizona zoning ordinance by amending, sorry, the zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, assigning and establishing city equivalency zoning to state trust land, property located in unincorporated Pinal County jurisdiction recently annexed pursuant to ordinance number fifteen fifteen, changing the zoning district classification for said property described in annexation case AN-1-20, ordinance number fifteen fifty, from Pinal County general rural zone to City of Apache Junction general rural low-density, single-family detached residential zone, repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for penalties.
Main motion?
Your Honor, I move that ordinance number fifteen sixteen as read by the city clerk be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for item number ten, ordinance number fifteen thirteen?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fifteen thirteen be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifteen thirteen, an ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction, Arizona zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for a new master-planned community known as the auction property at Superstition Vista's to be located on the property as described in rezoning case P-21-50-MPC, a request by D.R. Horton, represented by Patrick Brown, from general rural low-density, single-family detached residential to master-planned community, adopting by reference that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled "Auction Property at Superstition Vista's Master-Planned Community Plan, August 30th, 2021, repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for penalties."
Do I have a main motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fifteen thirteen as read by the city clerk be approved and adopted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay, do I have a motion for item number eleven, resolution twenty-one forty-seven?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number twenty-one forty-seven, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled "Auction Property at Superstition Vista's Master-Planned Community Plan, August 30th, 2021, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability be approved."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion for item number twelve, ordinance fifteen fourteen?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fifteen fourteen be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay, do I have a motion for item number eleven, resolution twenty-one forty-seven?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number twenty-one forty-seven, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction, Arizona zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for a new master-planned community known as the retained property at Superstition Vista's to be located on the property described in rezoning case P-21-51-MPC, a request by the Arizona State Land Department from general rural low-density, single-family detached residential to master-planned community, adopting by reference that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled "Retained Property at Superstition Vista's Master-Planned Community Plan, August 30th, 2021, repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for penalties."
Okay, main motion, please.
Your Honor, I move that ordinance number fifteen fourteen as read by the city clerk be adopted, approved and adopted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion for item number thirteen, resolution twenty-one forty-eight?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number twenty-one forty-eight, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain documents filed with the city clerk and entitled "Retained Property at Superstition Vista's Master-Planned Community Plan, August 30th, 2021, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing severability be approved."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion for item number fourteen?
Your Honor, I move that ordinance number fifteen eleven be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion for item number sixteen, which consists of resolutions twenty-one forty-nine and twenty-one fifty, since each related, relate to a needed development agreement?
Item number sixteen, resolution number twenty-one forty-nine, authorizing the city to enter into the Superstition Vista's development agreement for the auction property with D.R. Horton, Inc. Item number seventeen, resolution twenty-one fifty, authorizing the city to enter into the Superstition Vista's development agreement for the retained property with the Arizona State Land Department.
Sidney.
Let's get a good evening, Council. For the record, Sidney Rice, one of the planners on staff. This portion of the presentation is public hearing number two. As just mentioned, these are items sixteen and seventeen on your agenda, specifically going to cover the development agreements for the auction and retained property. Starting from the beginning, what exactly is development agreement? Development agreement is a contract which specifies the governing standards and the conditions for the development of a property, in this case, the auction property. There's quite a number of items that need to be met for the development agreement to be valid. For instance, it must be consistent with the general plan, must be amendable in writing, must be recorded with the county recorder, cannot have an emergency clause, and must have a legal consideration between the listed parties. And in this case, it will be effective thirty days after the annexation is adopted. The development agreement covers a range of topics. An example of those topics cover the duration, MPC uses, reference to the CFDs, references to the master plan reports, and it also makes note of dedications and reservations made for public facilities. Examples of those dedications and reservations for public facilities are the following. For the auction property, the development agreement notes that twenty acres are dedicated for a library site, as well as a ten thousand square foot building for a police or police substation to be built on the auction property, as well as fifteen percent open, fifteen percent, minimum of fifteen percent open space to be located in the auction property. Within that fifteen percent, forty acres will be dedicated for public use and public programming. For the retained property, we have reservation for ten acres to accommodate a police station and an evidence yard, as well as the fifteen percent open space requirement. With that said, staff is recommending the approval of the development agreement for the auction property and the development agreement for the retained property through the resolutions twenty-one forty-nine and twenty-one fifty. I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions from council? Seeing none. Do any of the applicants on these items want to speak? I see shaking head and nose, okay. As a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on any of these two items? And I don't see anybody moving, so, okay. I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion for item number sixteen, resolution twenty-one forty-nine.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number twenty-one forty-nine, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the city to enter into the Superstition Vista's development agreement for the auction property with D.R. Horton Incorporated be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay, do I have a motion for item number seventeen, resolution twenty-one fifty?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution twenty-one fifty, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the city to enter into the Superstition Vista's development agreement for the retained property with D.R. Horton, Inc. Item number seventeen, resolution twenty-one fifty, authorizing the city to enter into the Superstition Vista's development agreement for the retained property with the Arizona State Land Department.
Sidney.
Let's get a good evening, Council. For the record, Sidney Rice, one of the planners on staff. This portion of the presentation is public hearing number two. As just mentioned, these are items sixteen and seventeen on your agenda, specifically going to cover the development agreements for the auction and retained property. Starting from the beginning, what exactly is development agreement? Development agreement is a contract which specifies the governing standards and the conditions for the development of a property, in this case, the auction property. There's quite a number of items that need to be met for the development agreement to be valid. For instance, it must be consistent with the general plan, must be amendable in writing, must be recorded with the county recorder, cannot have an emergency clause, and must have a legal consideration between the listed parties. And in this case, it will be effective thirty days after the annexation is adopted. The development agreement covers a range of topics. An example of those topics cover the duration, MPC uses, reference to the CFDs, references to the master plan reports, and it also makes note of dedications and reservations made for public facilities. Examples of those dedications and reservations for public facilities are the following. For the auction property, the development agreement notes that twenty acres are dedicated for a library site, as well as a ten thousand square foot building for a police or police substation to be built on the auction property, as well as fifteen percent open, fifteen percent, minimum of fifteen percent open space to be located in the auction property. Within that fifteen percent, forty acres will be dedicated for public use and public programming. For the retained property, we have reservation for ten acres to accommodate a police station and an evidence yard, as well as the fifteen percent open space requirement. With that said, staff is recommending the approval of the development agreement for the auction property and the development agreement for the retained property through the resolutions twenty-one forty-nine and twenty-one fifty. I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions from council? Seeing none. Do any of the applicants on these items want to speak? I see shaking head and nose, okay. As a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on any of these two items? And I don't see anybody moving, so, okay. I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion for item number sixteen, resolution twenty-one forty-nine.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number twenty-one forty-nine, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the city to enter into the Superstition Vista's development agreement for the auction property with D.R. Horton Incorporated be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay, do I have a motion for item number seventeen, resolution twenty-one fifty?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution twenty-one fifty, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the city to enter into the Superstition Vista's development agreement for the retained property with D.R. Horton, Inc. Item number seventeen, resolution twenty-one fifty, authorizing the city to enter into the Superstition Vista's development agreement for the retained property with the Arizona State Land Department.
Sidney.
Let's get a good evening, Council. Sidney Rice, one of the planners on staff. This portion of the presentation is public hearing number two. As just mentioned, these are items sixteen and seventeen on your agenda, specifically going to cover the development agreements for the auction and retained property. Starting from the beginning, what exactly is development agreement? Development agreement is a contract which specifies the governing standards and the conditions for the development of a property, in this case, the auction property. There's quite a number of items that need to be met for the development agreement to be valid. For instance, it must be consistent with the general plan, must be amendable in writing, must be recorded with the county recorder, cannot have an emergency clause, and must have a legal consideration between the listed parties. And in this case, it will be effective thirty days after the annexation is adopted. The development agreement covers a range of topics. An example of those topics cover the duration, MPC uses, reference to the CFDs, references to the master plan reports, and it also makes note of dedications and reservations made for public facilities. Examples of those dedications and reservations for public facilities are the following. For the auction property, the development agreement notes that twenty acres are dedicated for a library site, as well as a ten thousand square foot building for a police or police substation to be built on the auction property, as well as fifteen percent open, fifteen percent, minimum of fifteen percent open space to be located in the auction property. Within that fifteen percent, forty acres will be dedicated for public use and public programming. For the retained property, we have reservation for ten acres to accommodate a police station and an evidence yard, as well as the fifteen percent open space requirement. With that said, staff is recommending the approval of the development agreement for the auction property and the development agreement for the retained property through the resolutions twenty-one forty-nine and twenty-one fifty. I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions from council? Seeing none. Do any of the applicants on these items want to speak? I see shaking head and nose, okay. As a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on any of these two items? And I don't see anybody moving, so, okay. I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion for item number sixteen, resolution twenty-one forty-nine.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number twenty-one forty-nine, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the city to enter into the Superstition Vista's development agreement for the auction property with D.R. Horton Incorporated be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay, do I have a motion for item number seventeen, resolution twenty-one fifty?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution twenty-one fifty, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the city to enter into the Superstition Vista's development agreement for the auction property with D.R. Horton, Inc. Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay, do I have a motion for item number eleven, resolution twenty-one forty-seven?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number twenty-one forty-nine, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the city to enter into the Superstition Vista's development agreement for the auction property with D.R. Horton Incorporated be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
as, as we can move this forward and take on this, uh, this endeavor.
Anyone else? Okay, and I'm going to throw in the comment in the aspect on it. Again, this is, uh, the CFD is having the, uh, aspect of the, the development, the growth is going to pay for the, the growth, whereas the rest of us are going to be enjoying the, uh, overall benefits of the, the whole entire area. Okay, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on these items? And I see nobody running up front to come all the way up.
Just Misha.
Okay.
She chased the cricket.
Okay. Um, but I forgot to ask, does the applicants want to say anything? You know, I see a shaking head no's, okay. So, uh, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion for item number eighteen, resolution twenty-one forty-four.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number twenty-one dash forty-four, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Apache Junction, Pinal County, Arizona, amending its policy guidelines and application procedures for the establishment of community facilities districts be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, your honor.
Okay, do I have a motion for number nineteen, resolution twenty-one forty-five?
Your Honor, I move that resolution number twenty-one dash forty-five, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Pinal County, Arizona, declaring its intent to form a community facilities district, ordering and declaring formation of the tax-leaving Superstition Vista's Community Facilities District Number One, and approving the district development financing, participation, waiver, and intergovernmental agreement, which such district be approved. Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, your honor.
Okay, do I have a motion for item number twenty, resolution twenty-one dash forty-six?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number twenty-one dash forty-six, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Apache Junction, Pinal County, Arizona, declaring its intent to form Community Facilities District, ordering and declaring formation of the tax-leaving Superstition Vista's Community Facilities District Number Two, and approving the district's development financing, participation, waiver, and intergovernmental agreements for such district be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, your honor.
Well, thank you, you all, in the aspect on it. Before we continue on, I'm going to make a little statement in the aspect on it. It unusual to see as many people sitting in the audience. We don't have a horse issue at all, that's what usually shows us off. So this is very outstanding. Uh, second thing is, after we're done with the, the final thing and the call to the public, which is going to come up here fairly quick, we're going to have some cake in the back for celebrating of the annexation, so please attend.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I, I do think we also just broke the record for the most number of motions in, at a council meeting.
In an hour and a half.
In an hour and a half.
Yes.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just because this is, uh, this group may never be back together again, could we get a photo of current council with former council? Maybe rock and sandy could come up. If you, before we break up, um, Al, can you help me with, with? Matt, can you help me with that? Because this is the best lighting, maybe do it right in here.
Okay. All right, old business, we don't have any old business, we don't have any new business. Council direction to staff, there is none, keep moving forward. Uh, selection of meeting dates, times, locations, and purposes.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that an executive session at six PM for Monday, October eighteenth, and Tuesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, be held in the city council conference room and the city council chambers at three hundred East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, and other meetings scheduled if necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
I really want to throw a wrench in it and say no, but I'm going to say yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, call to the public, and I do have one. I would like to remind everyone, the call to the public is a courtesy and not required by law. It's a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Requests to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussions on issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly nor place the matter on future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for speaker. And Mr. Schroder, I have one from you.
Kurt Schroder, two four four West Virginia Street, Apache Junction. We want to change our city's perception of where we are and where we want to be. We can do that, but it takes all you to understand people like me.